Okay, thank you, Jason. Welcome to Market Charter Township's regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. It is Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020, and it is 7:00 PM. And with that, I will start a roll call with myself, Mike Springer, Eagles Nest Road.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Dave Wigan, Brooklyn Road.
Okay, and we also have a staff planner, McCarthy, I believe, staff planner, Dietrichson, and attorney, Zappa. Also have a number of people from the public out there. Okay, the next item is the approval of the. And we do have a quorum right now. We have three out of the four that currently exist. So agenda, any changes, edits? Thank you for, Jason. Is, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
That was Johnson?
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, support it. Wigan.
Wigan. Okay, and I believe, Dave, we have, you have a suggestion, a little different way that we handle these motions. You repeat the motion, and it's in our bylaws, the PC bylaws. You want to explain that a little bit, please?
Yeah, it just keeps it cleaner. I know we do this in the, at the board meetings, and it keeps her instead everybody chiming in at once and cutting each other out. As a secretary, I'll just repeat the motion and do a roll call, starting with the motion and the supporter, and ending with the chairman. Okay?
Okay, so you basically, you take over the vote then, at this point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the motion is to approve the agenda as presented, and the motion maker is Johnson. Go ahead, Jim.
Right.
And it was supported by myself, yes, and Mike, I guess you're the only one left.
Mike says yes, yes.
Okay, passes three, zero, and one, app.
Okay, thank you. We have minutes from the previous meeting of July 8th.
If there's no requested amendments, I would, a motion to approve the minutes of January 8th or July 8th.
I will second that. Hopefully, Jim. Okay, I'm sorry, Jim, if you got to take it from there, then.
The motion is to approve the minutes of July 8th. Motion maker was myself, that's a yes, and supported by Mike Springer.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Passes three to nothing with one option.
Okay. So at this point, it is public comment. We do, it looks like there's a number of peep line here, and if, oh, there's Steve's back with us. Good, all right. We got everybody on a planning commission with us. I don't know if anybody, I mean, Jason McCarthy, anybody receive any emails from? I certainly haven't. Would any of these people that are out there listening in wish to make a comment? This is a time to do so, please. Okay, hearing no comment, those public comment, and we'll move on to new business. This is a site plan review, and it's for the Great Lakes Region Commission. There's three parcels within, oh, I'm sorry, four parcels within Cornerstone Park. It's a $7 million building, and I would like staff to tell us more about what's proposed.
Sure, I will start by giving the background on the property itself, and then I'll let Planner Dietrichson talk about the specifics of the site. So I'm going to share my screen really quick. So can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
If you're familiar with this site, this is north of the US 41 corridor. So here's the corridor, here's Commerce Drive coming to the Township Hall. Township Hall's here, Fire Hall's here. So this property is located right on the western border of the business park, and it's zoned development district, and the proposed land use does conform to the allowable permitted uses in the district. Had there been any residential zoning or residential land uses adjacent to this, this would have required a public hearing, but as it's as such, it does not, and therefore, we were able to move forward without a public hearing on this. But I think that you'll see it's a pretty impressive proposal, and I will let Ryan talk about the details of the, of the site development itself.
Like you said, Mike, it's a $7 million project. The, the site consists of two separate buildings, the main, about 32,000 square feet is, is what's going to be the main focus of the site. That building is going to contain offices, conference, cubicles, workspace, in addition to a maintenance area, a maintenance workshop. The second building is 1,000 square foot storage facility located at the northwestern corner of the site. If you guys are familiar with Wildlife's Biological Station currently, you know that they have a lot of, a lot of vehicles, a lot of trailers, a lot of equipment that they have, and they utilize season. So the north half of that site is going to be used for quite a bit of that storage, which is why there's, there's a ample parking space surrounding the site, and there is an ample amount of storage and maintenance shop areas in both buildings. See, I think they've included 195 parking spaces, which is much more than, than what, what we do. They have, half of the site is going to be encompassed by a security grade fence per the Great Lakes Region Commission security standards. And it's to my knowledge that they've worked with the business park to make that fence more aesthetically. It's going to be, instead of a chain link barbed wire fence, which I believe they have at their current space, to be more of a, a black metal gated fence with fixtures leaning outward towards the road. So there's that, leading into the gated area. There's a large service drive, which will be also gated and accessed by a key code. That large drive will be by technicians and staff to enter in and out hauling, hauling trailers, larger equipment, and they're also expecting maybe five to six larger deliveries for some other equipment that they use seasonally through that drive specifically. To the south of that, you have a survive for entrance and exit, or regular staff to come in and out, or public to, to enter the site, and a whole amount of parking on that south side of the site as well. The building materials look great. I think, you know, it's a mix of, it's a mix of masonry. They've been doing a lot of these sites downstate, I believe, building, brand new in a number of communities. You look at the site plan layout, you also see that they have their stormwater management is going to be onsite, that's located to the north. DPW still doing review actively right now. Sorry, Jason, I wasn't following along. You can see, you can see some of these stacks of the outside exterior for the main building there, which will follow suit for this building as well. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know what I missed there. I was looking at some physical copies.
Yeah, okay. This is kind of the interior.
So, yeah, that'd be the interior layout of the main building. Orange half-workspace, conference center. Storage building to the northwest side. Everything has been reviewed by the fire department and found satisfactory to their standards. They'll need some fire suppression and fire alarms as they come about and, and as they're designed, just for the review. Water connections, utilities look good. DPW has requested access easements to the taps that are actually going to be located inside, which they found acceptable, DPW has. It's just an easier layout for, for kind of everybody, and it's not uncommon for that to happen. See here, got their photometric plan there. Thing looks good, all downcast, dark sky friendly lighting is planned. Other than that, the, the larger things right now, you know, we think that this site plan looks good. We've been working with Rand Construction. Been great to work with for a number of weeks since they formally submitted everything, and even a little bit more preliminary. Kind of clean up some service drives, tee them up with the properties drives, which are across the road, and then working with the road commission to kind of make their, their standards for larger commercial directional drives apparent to the applicant. Overall, I think it's a good, good use of the site. It's going to fit pretty well with that large parcel. And of course, you know, it takes up four, four separate lots of the Cornerstone Park. They actually bought a sliver of property to the when, to make a little bit more room for the site as intended. But overall, I think it's going to be a great fit.
Yeah, that additional property was purchased to make sure that their buffer yard was in place between what is a fairly intensive land use and what is unknown here. So there, there is prescription in the zoning ordinance to address that situation, and they have covered that.
And the buffer yards to, you know, the north, where you've got Mark Tran there, and you've got Amcat there to the northeast, I believe, and then all the buffer yards adjacent to Cornerstone Drive and Venture Drive. You know, they look good too. You know, they, they got the right width, they got the right amount of plantings, the right types of plantings are to be going in. It's beefed up.
Ryan, do you want to go through our staff recommendation and any things that we're still waiting to address, or I know that we recommended approval on this contingent upon a couple items, but it would be good to surmise those quickly.
Sure, so everything looks great. There's been a few things indicated to the applicants and talked through with the different departments. So we are recommending the site plan as submitted contingent on items 3D, which would be the approval of the stormwater plan and issuance of a consent, which is currently under review and has been back and forth addressed on a few things, and I'm assuming will be tied up relative, and also contingent on item 3E, which would be the granting of access easements to the township to allow a DPW to have control in the case of emergency or in the case of a shut off that they can get into the gated portion of the site for, for service role. Then item 3F for the submittal of future sprinkler and alarm plans for the fire department, which will be coming along as a deferred submittal for the county's permit process. We'll get those at that point. 3I signs to be submitted separately, and then 4, who have a dress recorded and given by the Township Testing Department to receive their $70,000 financial guarantee, and then to apply for and receive any other additional permits specifically from the county. We received every other fee as indicated to the applicant as of last week, so, so they're in as of right now.
Good job, Ryan. I would say, if the applicant has anything to add to that, this would be a good time to perhaps discuss that.
Yeah, this is Neil from Rand Construction. I'm going to kind of take over the, the introduction on, I guess, on our part. And I don't have my, my video showing up, but I don't know if I can make that work or not. Yeah, so this is just.
We can't hear you, Neil.
Do with us, Neil.
He's logging back in, I hope, hold on.
Did I get back on? I don't know if anything is working.
You're, you're good.
You're good.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so this is just the, I think Ryan explained it very well. They're coming over from Wright Drive across the way, two main buildings here to consolidate a lot of different parcels that they, around the area. There's some over in Harvey, and there's their main facility down there, and additional space as well for future growth. The main building, basically what they, what this group does, they treat the Great Lakes general basin and, you know, surrounding tributaries for the sea lamprey, and they, they treat them yearly to be able to reduce the larva of sea lamprey that, that go out to the Great Lakes to save the fishery in general. So a lot of people on, online here for us is probably the majority of the people for us. They're all kind of rooting for us to, to move forward on, and yeah, it's, I think this summarized extremely well. The north side has pretty much the biggest feature, which is a retaining wall to put up off into the detention pond. So that's a requirement because the, the site goes down maybe about 35 feet or more from the south side to the north side, and it's necessary to keep the trailers and everything else, all the parking on a pretty level surface, so that everyone could park on it without anything slipping during the winter time. It must just drops down for the detention area. So, yeah, happy to answer any other questions that anyone else may have, but, you know, we're excited to be here and really appreciative for the opportunity with, with Ryan and the team. Very great compared to a lot of the communities downstate. You guys have been fantastic to work with.
So, do planning commissioners have questions?
Yeah, I've got, I'd like to weigh in on a couple things, Mike.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, Dave?
At first, it seems like a good fit for the area, and it's, and it looks like a fairly clean submission. I don't see any, any big issues there. I do have a couple question more for staff than, than for Neil is 3F. I thought, Rick, Ryan, I thought you, heard you mention in there that the fire department had approved their submissions. Is that their, their final approval, or?
Yeah, their final approval, um, they typically looked at circulation and grade, which are, which are huge first and foremost, and they were satisfactory with that. They were anticipating.
I just wondered about the, the staff recommendation of 3F still needs to be in there as one of the approval items.
It does, because they still do need to receive fire sprinkler and fire alarm plans, and, and they are looking forward to having Knox boxes located for entry, so it will be.
And then I'm, I'm wondering about the west property boundary where they had to purchase a sliver of property to make way for height and area for a buffer yard. They don't actually have to put that buffer yard in, they just have to have that area available, depending on what goes up next door. Is that right?
Yeah, they chose to be proactive in that measure, and we're thankful that they did. So regardless, they certainly have the right to acquire more property and put plantings in. So we're, we're thankful that they did choose to do that. A lot of times you would battle with somebody over that, but clearly, this is going to be a demonstration site on nice landscaping and aesthetics. You know, for what it is, we, we believe it's a really attractive site. You know, it's, it's almost quasi-industrial in nature, but the softening and the effect of the landscaping, and, and I will say that there was additional landscaping added to the west side of the building, primarily because there's a large amount of parking, right? And so we treated the laydown area on the north side as almost like an auto dealership where you would have, you know, you have parking islands and things for the common areas where people come in and, and visit, or employees park. So there are those bump out features that are, that are there, but for the ease of plowing and the ease of maintenance of that site, effectively staff worked with them to add additional landscaping on the west side to counter the impervious surface without, you know, any detention areas in, or gra, or, you know, the parking islands that you'd normally see on a standard commercial parking blocks, you know, development. If that makes sense.
Last comment is, is born out of curiosity more than anything else. I know the township has no dealings with the, the covenants of the industrial park. I'm just wondering, for my own personal interest, if they, if all the parking of the trailers and stuff outside that meets the covenants, I assume?
Yeah, I can, I can respond to that one. That, we ran this all the way through the owners of the business park, and there, we, the only change we had to make was to change that fencing along the north and east side. It's going to be a black decorative fence versus a, a chain link with barbed wire as the, you know, it's a typical federal requirement. This is a level one federal facility, so it needs level of security for the fencing, for the, for all the vehicles and all the equipment that's back there. But that was the only change that they really wanted to make was changing that fence line, just so the bordering property, you know, can still look at something nice on the outside. But other than that, they're ready for approval once, once this, this is approved.
All right, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Dave. I've got a couple of questions. One of them, could you put this, the screen up, either Ryan or Jason of the site plan, because I need to understand where this fence is that they're going to pull into with a trailer, and where are they going to go into the fenced in area?
So what I'm going to do here, Mike, is rotate this image so that it's actually oriented.
So north is up north, okay?
That's correct, yeah.
Got it.
So if you want to go ahead, Neil, and demonstrate, and I'll follow you with the cursor where the fence is going.
Yeah, sure. The, so there's two drives in. The, the south drive towards Venture Drive is going to be just for the employees at the front, pretty much office staff, and then the second entrance on the, the larger driveway, that's, it's, it's that large for two different reasons. First, to line up with the driveway across the street, just so there's not a competing driveway, people aren't kind of turning into each other, and all able to turn in directly into the facility. So there's three drive-through doors that are on the shop side, the north side of that main building. A trailer, a truck and trailer combo will be pulling directly through, and also through that larger opening, it's about a 65-foot ivyway there. That will allow a semi-truck to come in through, follow along the north side of the building, pull southward on, or the west side of the building, and then back up into that loading dock into this storage building.
Okay, is there a, a security fence where into a certain different area?
Yeah, so Jason, if you could zoom in there, about halfway into the building, halfway, the north and south direction, you can sense crossing the east and west drive aisles there. On the west side, it crosses about halfway through, and on the east side, it crosses right south to that, that will touch the building to be completely secure to the, to the north side.
That helps a lot, because my biggest concern was making sure those trailer weren't too long, that they'd be sticking out while you opened the gate.
Right.
That's it. And one last question, what percentage of this, the property here is left is green space?
I might have that.
No.
Yeah, we would have that. It's, it's way above what's required.
It was greater than what's required in the developmental district, no doubt.
That's great. Thank you.
I'm assuming the fencing is similar to what the Coast Guard utilized down on the waterfront.
That, that's exactly what it is. That's specifically what the, the people from the development told us to, to mimic. So yes, it is, it will be pretty much identical. I mean, crossing that drive aisle, something creative for a 65-foot cantilever fence, or, or two of them that part the sea is there, but otherwise, yes, it should be the splitting image.
I would like to add that if you see in the staff report, number 3C, we did make the recommendation that the applicant take steps to incorporate some type of design that would better meet the standards set forth by the county road commission for a commercial driveway of that. And I know Neil has been in contact with County Road Commission. I've been in contact with them, and, and they seem to be open to a few different design type ideas, but they make that a recommendation for, to see on the site plan, but just a, a general recommendation, because it meets our standards at the township here.
Yeah, once, once it goes to them, we'll, we'll work something out with them, because, I mean, they obviously want something to divide that large space, but we also, so the entirety of that driveway to be able to pull the truck in and get it back around the building to be able to scoop it back around. So we're going to have something, something that's movable or something that's painted on, whatever they're going to agree to, we'll make sure that's agreeable to them.
Mr. Hakenin, do you have any questions? Mr. Johnson, do you have any questions? No, I don't. Okay, it looks like we're in a position here.
I just want to let you guys know that Steve's microphone is not working, so I will continue to monitor messages in case he has something that he wants to say, which is really kind of weird at this point.
Now, he can give us a thumbs up. I see him. So would somebody like to make a motion? Well.
I could make a motion if you want.
That'd be good, Dave.
I would move to approve the proposed site plan contingent on the submission and approval of items 3D, 3E, the F, 3I, and 4.
I will second that. I think it's your turn, Dave. I think you got to repeat the motion, call, vote.
Okay, the motion is to approve the proposed site plan contingent on the submission and approval of item 3D, 3E, 3F, 3I, and 4, and the motion maker was myself, and I'm, yes, the second was.
Mike Springer is a yes.
And Steve Higginon, please?
Thumbs up.
He gives me a thumb up, and Jim Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, passes for, oh.
Very good.
So congratulations, Neil, and Fish and Wildlife. I will add that we're proud that we're keeping you in the community, in our community. It's an important service that you provide to many, many people, so we're, we're very thankful for that. We will be in touch tomorrow, probably from Ryan, with a follow-up letter with regard to the site plan approval and its conditions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, people.
Thank you. Here we go. All right, the next item on the agenda, this is unfinished business, and it's a planning commission bylaws review, and I believe we got something from Roger Zap on July 20th, and maybe Miss wants to bring us up to speed on this.
He's muted. He's muted.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roger. You're muted again.
Can you help out now?
Yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay. On the twentieth and fairly quickly, I made a couple of fairly minor innocuous revisions, I think. And they're spelled out in the in the correspondence I sent. One thing I failed to address in the correspondence I sent was that the planning commission is a statutorily created. So under MCL one twenty five point thirty eight nineteen, the planning commission is permitted to approve and adopt its own by law. So no further action is required in terms of approval by the township board. I had also taken a look at the real committee recreation committee. Bylaws are actually, I think they're titled duties and responsibilities, and that is a pretty much what I'll call a homemade committee that stands separately. Uh, that is created by the township board or a couple of minor revisions to that proposal as well. Those probably should be approved by the township board. Basically, the only real significant substantive shade was that the referral to term limits. While there are no statutory term, state law does provide that for any person who is also a member of the township board. Person's planning commission term must coincide with the township board term. So if the he or she can continue on the planning commission at the pleasure of that member and that township board. But if that person ends the township board position, um, he or she can no longer be a planning commissioner as the liaison member of between the township board and the planning commission. That would not prevent that member, for example, from serving filling a vacancy that might exist on the planning commission. So on for any concerns I didn't address in the correspondence. It's in the written report.
Yeah, Mike, I got a question if you would.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
I'm just I sent out the the cleaned out cop or cleaned up copy of of what we got from Roger. Did everybody get that or did nobody get that?
I got it.
Okay.
Received it.
Okay, Jason, you see? Yeah, you're muted.
I I may have, Dave, um, we've been pretty slammed the last couple of days, but there's been a lot of stuff coming my way in the last three or four days, including last Friday. So I know that Ryan and I are trying to weed through a lot right now. Uh, I may, I mean, I could check my email. I it's more important.
Sorry.
It's more important that the that the planning commission gone than staff, but.
Uh, if everybody got it, I it seemed pretty straightforward and the recommendations from our attorney seemed pretty straightforward. I would be comfortable to make from what we approve the bylaws of the planning commission as amended by recommendations from the township attorney.
Also, second, oh, Johnson, support. So you just made that motion.
Yeah.
Feel like you got to make it again?
Who was the support?
Jim Johnson.
Jim Johnson, okay. Yeah, the motion was to be planning commission bylaws as 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 amended and recommended as rec the township attorney. And the motion maker was me and I'm a yes. Was Commissioner Johnson. And uh, Mr. Hakenon.
Yes.
Hey, his voice is back.
Nice.
Chairman Spring.
Uh, yes.
Thank God.
It passes four and oh.
Steve, that's the best you've sounded in months.
New computer. That's why I couldn't find a darn microphone.
I thought you were all over that technology.
Aren't you an IT guy? No.
Okay. Believe we can move on to correspondence eight A.
No, no, no.
Oh, do we? We didn't take the vote?
Well, we took the vote, but we still got to deal with the recreation duties and responsibilities.
All right, it's not which it should be, and we didn't edit it. Can we still do that?
No.
I didn't think so. So I mean, it's in a hurry. And we do have to get it to the board. So we can, we'll make sure it's on the agenda for next uh August.
August twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys kind of remember that when the planning commission packet goes out on Friday. And, you know, you could add something twenty four hours ahead of time. But um you know, we had a lot of lot of wheels in motion right now. So when you guys send me fragmented stuff on Monday, Tuesday, it gets a little hairy. And so I just want to clarify that. I mean, it's real easy for you to say, hey, staff, do this, but it has to be done properly. And I guess that's what tonight's all about. It's kind of slowing down, taking these things as they are, one by one, and and moving them along as we can. So thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, so let's move on to correspondence. We've got A day. It's a twenty twenty outdoor public resolution moratorium update on that. And I believe Mr. Zappa also has a brief for us and some writings. July ninth, is that the is that the document we should be looking at, Roger?
On July ninth, the town should conducted a special meeting for the purpose of considering a resolution to adopt a moratorium on um publicings of uh that was considered, that was weighed carefully with the number of considerations, including the fact that there is some ambiguity. It of order twenty twenty one fifteen issued by Governor Whitmer. And just very briefly on that, what the ambiguity is, is it generally caps outdoor or gatherings of more than two hundred fifty people. There is then an exception within the executive order that permits gatherings of up to five hundred people. And the exceptions include some concert venues, racetracks, sports arenas, and similar types of facilities. And even the five hundred person cap is subject to a twenty five percent limit on what the capacity is. That's a very difficult thing to assess to some extent. And the Center for Disease Control and Prevent has also issued a number of criteria that the board considered in reaching this moratorium. And just voted this a moratorium on any type of temporary use permits for outdoor gatherings for ninety days. Or until Governor Whitmer issues some notification on outdoor gatherings and specifically on executive order twenty twenty dash one fifteen. Or until we move into phase, which would essentially be lifting of restrictions on outside activities. It's a very short term moratorium. Um, up there, there you have it in front of you, and it went into effect immediately as the board, the township boarded it unanimously.
Thank you, Roger. Sure. Any questions? Right, correspondence A B approved road committee meeting minute. So in the second, um, I believe Mr. Wigan would be best to
I can discuss.
Discussing that.
Cover that down and report road committee if you want, Mike.
Sure, that's fine. Okay, HC draft marijuana ordinance, legal council review and app. We have another document here from you. It's the July seventeenth brief.
Basically, I apologize for the length at without actually even reaching the merits of what's in Article sixteen specifically. But this is a very riled and bald subject, and to compound it, we were under the emergency rules that the the state of Michigan issued on July three of two thousand nineteen. They were renewed in January and they expired. They expire July three of twenty twenty on June twenty nine of twenty. They're no longer temporary or emergency rules and they change a lot of things essentially. I will let you digest what's in the opinion so far. What I have done done Article two, which was strictly the definitions. It's very important that the definition conflict with the state statutes. You've got the and you've got five different statutes that are basically governing this. But but you've got the medical marijuana licensing statute, the base, the Michigan regulation marijuana statute. And they each have differ. On the one hand, does it make a lot of sense to have one definition of what a grower is under both medical marijuana parlance and and adult use recreational marijuana field? Absolutely. And the planning commission appears that they attempted to accomplish. Fortunately, our state legislature didn't exercise that same wisdom. And they used their own definitions that while not maybe technically are different. I pointed plants that can be grown in medical marijuana growth facility versus in a recreational facility is different. And we just have to work with that. Then the statutes, I noticed as I was proofreading that just at the beginning of the week that they still could benefit from being in medical order. There are a couple of those that are out of alphabetical order. And traditionally, your definitions, you would want to be found in alphabetical order. But aside from that, I'm set to go. I'll give you just a couple of key bullet points. That should be kind of a takeaway from this. The first first I really have to recommend pretty strenuously, I think, that we separate on an ordinance from the zoning ordinance. Is it possible to put them together? It is logistically going to have some enforcement issues down the road. And also, it's it's fairly regularly in the first couple of years that this is put into a play into place. I think many of the municipalities that kind of jumped the gun and a marijuana ordinances are finding that now that as as this evolves, that they're having to make amendments. If we in the zoning ordinance, that's really going to um prolong and make it more difficult even for simple amendments to take place. In the zoning ordinance, such as the Article fifteen nomograph provision is eight, what the land use intensity for the various categories will be. And what uh zoning district each appear in legally. But beyond that, you may want to have in Article sixteen, some of your provisions in terms of those regulations and so forth, but the bulk of those you will probably want to have in a standalone ordinance is my recommendation. That's all. There is a provision now that own that is now uniform under the new rules that wasn't allowing an applicant to pre qualify. There's a real chicken and egg scenario with the state licensing, township licensing licensing, what should happen in what order? I will, before the planning commission's next meeting, try to put together just a very brief little outline of what probably makes the best sense for that. And the planning commission has countless hours, I can tell, looking at this. So this is going to be a suggestion, not a um a dictation that that's how it has to be. Had a number of other sample ordinances and well as well. And there's a pre qualification provision where the the applicant can I to the state and get essentially a pre approval, if you will, from the state, subject to meeting other requirements. Um, I think that makes a lot of sense, and that can now be used side by side for both the medical the what I'll call recreational. The technical term is adult use recreate, adult use marijuana. But I think we've been referring it to it as recreational needs. But I think it's going to make a lot of sense to incorporate that in both of our ordinances. Um, the third takeaway on this is even though it might seem kind of redundant, I think it's probably going to be best from a legal standpoint to separate out the provisions medical versus recreational marijuana, the application process and what the criteria are for each type of license and so forth. Um, because they're different and they use different terms. I just pointed out a couple of the examples. It's so easy, for example, to to refer to any of either medical or recreational businesses as establishments or facilities and use those terms interchange change interchangeably. The legislature hasn't done that. So medical marijuana um businesses are referred to as facilities, recreational marijuana to as establishments. And they they mean things. So we have to be kind of cautious that we track that in our ordinance. And I think that's an easy thing for us to do. That shouldn't be a time consuming, difficult thing, but it's just cognizant of. And there are other terms like that also. That should be separated out and we should try to track that terminology without the medical marijuana from the recreational. The next one is you can have zero number of of certain types of facilities. If you wish to do that, that is completely up to planning commission recommendation. However, I in looking through this, I can envision that the most difficult type of in this case would be establishment or license to regulate or control is probably going to be the temporary on events. And by the same token, I'm not quite certain whether our zoning ordinance is equipped to issue to temporary use permits, because keep in mind that as it's currently worded, and I think correctly um under the zoning ordinance, a temp permit gets that that's different than a special use permit. The special use permit allows the planning commission to that a whole host of. about a whole host of things and attach conditions that make a lot of sense based on your site plan, based on the type of bits being presented, based on your neighbors, the the nature of the neighborhood it's going in, almost anything imaginable and take a look at and impose conditions as long as they're reasonable and make sense for the public health, safety and welfare. There's a little bit less ability to do with temporary marijuana events. So it may make some sense to, at this point at least, consider not allowing those in the township. Again, that's a topic of discussion. If if you want to move forward with that, we can come up with that work. Vision there being, and I don't mean just enforcement issues from a zoning standpoint across the whole gamut of enforcement from fire department to police department to legal authority. So that's going to be a troublesome category, I think, not just in market township, but across the state of Michigan. I think we'll probably see solve on that from the legislative standpoint and perhaps from the courts even. Another thing to just take a look at, any of many of the other municipalities is you can restrict how close any type of facility or establishment is from a school, many, and it can be up to 1,000 feet. I noticed that you've 500 feet and that's fine. It can be whatever you want it to be. But 500 feet just be have it. You've got two places that qualify as schools in the township. Thinking about what that means in terms of actual places that currently exist. Other municipalities have also included restrictions on how close they can alcohol and drug treatment places to daycare centers for little children, for homes and churches, a variety of other things. Again, I'm not, I'm not indicating that you need that per se, just be aware as you go through. On are those things we want to consider or want to recommend? You look at it and decide not to, but I can state with some accuracy that that has been a big topic of discussion. In some also be aware that even can have what's called equivalent licenses. And that was true even under the old emergency rules, but they've now cleared. Made it a little bit. So what that means is a medical marijuana grower can have a license to grow medical marijuana up to the maximum number of plants at the same location as a recreational grower. And that will bring in a separate license, but at the same physical location perhaps. So that might be important. You're looking at your land use. Because if you've got multiple licenses at one nation that could bring in a whole lot more traffic and use. The beauty of that is though is that you've made all of these permit situations. So you can't, you don't really need to envision in advance every scenario that could come up. By making it a use permit, that that's an extremely wise plan to make these special use permit situations. Because it allows you more flexibility to address. So I would strongly recommend not to back off of making these special uses. But just be aware that you could have more coexisting licenses at a single location. And there are places that are already applying communities, to my understanding, to do that. Where common ones are medical provisioners and retail retail sales of recreational marijuana, where they have to actually separate their inventory in the amen, or it's anticipated to become common to have those two together. And what that means is the township will also be able to issue or have to issue separate licenses, one for each. So there's a separate fee for each. But again, keeping in mind that could affect the land use intensities. You probably had a minimum want to have a provision that's something like if there are equivalent licenses, again is the term at one location, that the hot highest land use intensity will apply. For example, I noticed that it that you have land use intensities for some of the medical facilities are at a lower L U I than you have for the equivalent license of a recreational establishment. And that's fine. There's some logic to that. I and why that was done that way. But we probably want to have something in there that says if you have two of them, and this is kind of obvious maybe, but it probably should not needed, that you have to go with the highest L U I on that. There's quite a bit of sorting through the provisions on the on the Article 16 things. I don't think there's much of anything that needs to be done with Article 15. Articles, that's the nomographs and so forth. That looks like it was reasonably well thought out. And Article 16 was reason not out also, but there's just, especially with the new rules, too much commingling of the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana that needs to be separated out. And I think with a little bit of work, we're really not all that far away from coming up with final draft that that could be put in a recommendation form to the board, but there is still some work on that. I have not really done that yet because I think to some degree, there's a lot of interpretation. The planning commission is the body has the pulse on the township. That's not, it's not up to the attorney to try to put in what things might be a good idea as opposed to what fits the master plan and what fits the neighborhood and where are we envisioning these? Is something that the the planning commission is especially well equipped to do. So I put myself out there to make myself available as you're going through this, help missions come up. But it's probably stepping over the line a little bit for me to start making you know, rewording and redraft your Article 16 provisions on that because that could really change the So again, our hand in hand with you has questions come up on what's the best way to word this? Or how should we address this scenario? But that probably still should come from the planning commission. Because you're best equipped to know what the requirements are, that's really should be doing. I'll shut up and open up the questions you might have.
No, Roger, that was really good. It was important information and I certainly learned some stuff and I appreciate it. Other commissioners have any comments or questions for attorneys? Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead. As far as the definition section, I would think that we could get pretty well wrapped up and just incorporate the recommendations into the definitions. And what I think we make sure we've addressed the pre qualification as well as the the associated licenses or I don't know what all of them in there.
Equivalent is the term they use.
But I'm not, what I'm not sure about is how do you separate out the actual ordinance that the board puts together from the zoning ordinance? What exactly is putting an ordinance together for versus what the township or what the zoning ordinance clarifies?
That's an excellent question and it looks like different municipalities have addressed that a little differently on what goes in in which. Generally, I think the number of establishments or facilities should go in your marijuana. Let me back up a little bit. The purpose of your marijuana ordinance under the state statutes is is to express that the township wishes to allow a medical marijuana facilities and B adult use recreational establishments within its boundary. Nation there that says this is we 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 wish to prohibit these types of businesses from within our boundaries. So from that stance, even the ventilation and the hours of operation and the internal grow light type of regulation, I'm not talking so much external like downcast lighting that we require of all things that are really specific. Marijuana establishments or facilities should remain in the marijuana ordinance. And there's, I'm envisioning probably a part A and a part B, one for medical and one for facilities to separate that out. Did the planning commission have any samples from elsewhere to look at? I'm seeing some no nods or shakes and some yeses.
Yeah, it was explained to the planning commission that the draft that we were working on was a hybrid of several that we reviewed, including Republic, Nagani Township. We reviewed the city of Marquette's proposal. And I think just to add on to what Roger was saying about separating, you know, the zoning ordinance would take care of land uses and land use regulations. Whereas what Roger's saying about the specific provisions for medical and adult use recreational marijuana should be a police ordinance that can be addressed not only by the zoning administrator, but most importantly by the sheriff's department. I think that's one of the, you know, the key components of having a police ordinance is that it's it's addressable in a different way and it's enforceable in a different way than it is by zoning to.
And when now the special use permit issuance, keep in mind that in addition to a license that you that market township would issue, whether it's for medical marijuana or recreation, recreational marijuana will require an application for use permit. So I'm not sure that any amendments are really necessary to address that. But we'll be looking at existing both Article 16 and Article 17 of the zoning ordinance that talks about special use permits to just see do these special use permit adequately address issues and concerns we have on a because you could, you could probably either do it sequentially or concurrently, but they're still going to have to apply both a license and a special use permit. If if a license gets granted, I mean, they can't operate the business if it's if a special use permit for that particular location is denied. And the two just work hand in hand. So the special use should remain in the, you know, in in the but that can be pretty generic, just as your signage, your signage for you've got a very comprehensive. Does it section Article 21, 22 in your zoning ordinance that addresses signing? That would apply to any business, not just to a medical or recreational marijuana business. And are we crossing a fine line there or dancing on a on a tight rope of which should go in which probably? Only municipality doing that, but I think that's the route we want to go is just my opinion on it.
Well, I guess if I'm figuring this out, what you're saying right is is I would think the best thing to do is if you're going to accept the definitions. Then then done. And the next thing to determine is what what that is currently text amendments in the zoning ordinance, do we want to pull out, make a township ordinance? And once we determine that and ensure that we've we've the pre qualification and address the equivalent licenses, then we would be able to move the ordinance forward. But it almost sounds like we would have to make a recommendation for the township ordinance. Cover the things that we have pulled out.
My connection was a little unstable, so I got I lost just the while breaks and just the last little part there on the recommendation to the township. I just lost a few words.
Yeah, I would just wonder if after we pull everything out zoning ordinance best covered by that is best covered by township ordinance. Steve, you might want to mute your your computer there. There you go. You get hold out the the items a lot of the zoning ordinance that are best covered by a township ordinance, then we text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And then we would almost have to recommend a township ordinance for consideration by the board so that we can make items that we pulled out of the zoning ordinance are covered in the township ordinance.
Yes, I think that makes sense. I agree with that.
Is the planning commission willing to give staff and legal some liberty to come up with some drafts that would work in the next? Let's say by maybe the next meeting. I mean, no, not the next board meeting. I am, everything has got to go through the planning commission first, right? So except for a police ordinance that can go to the board, but they should go concurrently. So at the time when, you know, the township planning commission comes up with their recommendations, it would be at that time. You know that we have a public hearing and we send it along with the recommendations for a police ordinance to support that. So to support the zoning text amendments.
I would, I would think all you're looking for is a concurrence of the commission that will move ahead with legal and and define some of those.
Yeah, just clean everything up. We were kind of in a bubble there for a while and not that we went rogue or anything. I think we really worked hard on that. And a lot of those, you know, the land use nomograph, the definitions, those are all going to remain. But from an enforceability standpoint and really address some of, you know, what the planning commission perceives as the community's concerns. Those can be separated out and and put into something that's a little bit more rigid on the police, the police ordinance side of it. Our standalone, excuse me.
Is there any commissioners that have any questions of attorney Zappa?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I've got a couple.
Go ahead.
First of all, the it to me, it's it's kind of still which came first, the chicken or the egg? So you have to get your license from the state. You have to get your own township and then you have to apply for a special use permit. And we're talking thousands of dollars. Is that not correct?
That is correct. Well, the order is, I think we can refine that to get out egg thing there. There's a pre qualification provision that allows the applicant to go to the state and submit certain things because they've got to go through all kinds of criminal background checks and ability things. And then just one of the things that they need to show is that the township or the city where they're applying even The township or the city where they're applying even less. So if they can then get the. At the state level, they then could come to us and say what our certificate of pre qualification or whatever they call it. And rather than us doing all of that work on processing umpteen. For people that can't even qualify at the state level. My thought is, at least initially, that that might sort through, so there's less. Quite frankly, work at the township level that those get sorted out and vetted. Before we see them perhaps.
Yeah, I I and in a similar vein, could the township pre qualification that the state. Pre qualified them, we pre qualify them without asking for an incredible financial stipend. Go through the special use process permit. If that's approved, then they finish the process for the licensing. Is that something that makes more?
They can perhaps. I think that that's an excellent question. Keeping sometimes some of these businesses are in a hurry. So so I don't know if we want to necessarily preclude the possibility of having a. Special use and licensing application going on if that's what they want to do. As long as they're doing it with full disclosure that they need both.
Yeah, yeah.
But I I have to take a look at the statute because generally, location fees are not refundable.
Right.
So once they apply for a license, whether that the state or whether it's at the town, they've applied for a license. And we've done a bunch of work and the state has done a bunch of work, and if we say no, they don't get it back.
But if we say yes, and we and we don't approve where they want to put it, then they're behind an eight ball as well.
Yes, that is, that's correct. So you've got three level trick chicken and egg scenario. And then compound that with just because the state says. They have equivalent license. And I'll I keep coming back to provisioning centers. And and adult use sales, recreational marijuana at the at the sale level. Retailer, that's the term I was groping for. You could conceivably have a situation where they can't do that in Marquette Township. Because the land you use intensity. Only allows this intensity, or you have to have this kind of buffer zone or that. By having different land use intensities, which is logical. I'm not saying they should all be the same, but it's very logical. They may not be able to do that, even though the state says they're pre qualified. It might not fit under our ordinance because we don't want these types of equivalents. In in this type of of a zoning district or at this type of a location. There's nothing wrong with doing that, but those are durations for any applicant as well as for the planning commission to be looking at. When they start rolling in.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any questions for Attorney Zappa?
I do. Just a little one, but and he might have addressed this before or someone might have, but I I don't remember. The word marijuana in some of the texts, he has a J and some of them he has an H. And I was just wondering the difference.
Comments is to be a little snide is the state doesn't know how to spell marijuana. And I'm just saying that the traditional spelling of marijuana is with a J. When we refer specifically to the Michigan. At a taxation and of whatever and regulation of marijuana act, it is with an H. So when we are referring to the name of shoot, we should be using an H. If we are just generically referring to marijuana. I guess probably free. Want most places municipalities are we use are using the traditional spell the J. I I can be convinced of whatever the planning commission wants to do on that one. If you want instant and use an H on everything. That's an easy fix. I don't care. It it kind of, I'm not sure why. State of Michigan has traditionally in all of its legislation or most of its legislation used an H in marijuana. But all of the titles of shoots spell marijuana with an H.
Okay, thanks.
We're not bound to do that, except like I say, when we're referring to the name of the statute. If that's how they want to spell it, then I guess we should probably quote it properly, but.
Thank you, Roger. Any more questions from the commissioners?
I just wondered if you if it isn't just easily fixed by putting a disclaimer in the in the front of the whole zoning ordinance. That states that. Both spellings can be used concurrently and all that stuff. They mean same thing and.
Yes, I think that's.
We don't have to worry about it.
That's what we would probably do. We'd have to kind of tweak the wording a little bit, but yes, I think that's the most logical thing to do. That marijuana means using an H versus versus a J and that there is no. Artificial distinction. Yeah, that I think that's the best way to address it.
Thank you, Attorney Attorney General. I just got promoted, yeah. Attorney Zappa, any once more, any more questions for our attorney from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Planner McCarthy has offered to work on the text of this. And provide us an update in August, August twelve. And I don't think we need to vote, but is there any questions or comments, people supportive of that? I for one am.
Yeah, I think we just need a general concurrence, and I think everybody's on board with that. I am.
I concur.
Very good. Thank you. We're now on to reports. Nine A Township Board Report, Mr. We. You got to unmute yourself.
Last night's township board meeting. There wasn't a lot of activities that took place. The there was a privileged comment from. About an Eagle Grant Opportunities and the board passed a motion allowing the continued gathering of information. With regard to acceptable projects within the our township as well as matching fund sources. And then the board approved hazard pay increases for election workers. At the August fourth primary and the workers will receive a five dollar per hour increase. From eleven and twelve dollars to sixteen and seventeen dollars. And that was it.
Thank you, Dave. Planning Commission, looking at the rec committee. We have the road committee report, Mr. Wigan.
The road committee is pretty straightforward. Farners complete the king. And as of July twenty first, following a road inspection, the infrared hot patch areas have been completed also. And they fixed additional hole out and they didn't fix it. The Marquette County Road Commission fixed an additional hole out on Lake Enchantment Road. So it appears all we're waiting for with that is the final bill.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Recreation Committee Report, we met last night at five thirty. I mean, it's going to be a short meeting. I think we went forty minutes or so. Basically, nothing really new from the rec committee. We. Discuss the bylaws. We also talked about the showing kiosk, the map. And also, one of the things is that it was recommended that we laminate the paper masks, the mats. That are in there. Apparently they're curling, so I believe Mr. Deidre Son was going to look into that. Trail Park Connector. I know Mr. McCarthy met with NTN. And they're looking at the bridge and other projects. Other than that, I want Jim Johnson to know that last night that at the planning commission. Pete LaRue recommended we find a sledding hill. And I thought you would, you know, the thing is, we got to get people together and those that are supportive of that. Let's work on something. But other than that, I don't have. Future discussion on the Lions Field Ice Rink roof and concept. And I believe Planner McCarthy indicated that the landscape was moving ahead at both Lions Field. And Shrumit Park. That's it for my report on the rec committee. Okay, next item is Napa proposed parking action. Staff.
Yeah, so Ryan and I have been working in conjunction with Brian Sadline and the owners of Napa there. We've approved a plot plan essentially to expand their parking lot. It's going to happen in two phases. We're going to construct the expansion this year and of course, per the zoning ordinance, any applicant who has an approved site plan. Has up to two fiscal or two years to complete all component components of that site plan. As such, they wanted to set, you know, submit two separate site plans, but we just said, no, if you're going to do it within two years. Then we can get this accomplished with one plot plan review. So the impervious surface amounts didn't trigger site plan review, but essentially they're just adding a small. Parking addition to the north of their warehouse building, and they're going to add some green space. And then when Discount Tire comes in and builds next year, they will tie in to that. Shared access drive and they'll have a driveway of their own, along with some landscaping and trees and bushes and green space that will be added at that time. So it'll dress it up quite nicely. Brian, if I miss anything, go ahead.
That's the gist of it. I gave them zoning clients approval last week.
Thank you, gentlemen. Reports E twenty twenty-one M dot on high highway project update.
So I sat in on a meeting on Friday. It was about two hours long and it went from eleven AM to about one PM. And that was from and with M dot representatives from around the state. Design firm consultants and we highlighted three sites in the city. That are going to be getting some access management treatments. As you know, the twenty 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 twenty-one project. Will go from Wright Street or actually County Road four ninety-two and US forty-one. All the way out to Front Street. So we covered the three sites that were. Flagged for some improvements in the city, and then we moved on to ten sites in the township that. We're going to hope for some driveway consolidation and access improvements. That will definitely increase safety and they will increase the aesthetic in the township. So those are basically for public yet because we want to be able to go out and meet with those businesses. With M dot representatives. The next step right now is that the M dot team in Lansing is putting together some. Plan view drawings that will show exactly what's being proposed so that when we go out to talk to those folks in the next couple of weeks. We'll have something that will, you know, demonstrate hopefully the safety improvements and help gain additional support. I will say that M dot was pleased that staff was so willing to. Go out, meet with businesses and champion some of these changes. So we may not get all ten of them because of course that's private property and you know, you want to make sure that everybody's happy with things. But again, a lot of it's in the M dot right away. So we're going to go out with our olive branches and try to make some improvements on some of these areas where you have some stacking issues. And some close calls with regard to rear end collisions.
Very nice, Jason. I think that's going to help a lot. You have a good a good skill of collaborating with people and putting together. Good plans and and bring them to fruition, so.
The the main carrot here is that M dot's willing to put this, these projects or these adjustments into the curb work. And such on their dime and not the business's dime. So if we're hoping to come at it from the standpoint of safety, then the standpoint that it's not going to cost you anything to make these improvements. So you guys give us a lot of credit on staff, but we really. You know, we really rely on your guidance and expertise as well. And then our ability to work with and thankfully, we have great working relationships with all of our local and state agencies. So that comes with time. This is my tenth year and a lot of times it just takes time to. Get those things in place, but thankfully we have a great team and very proactive and forward thinking board in planning commission. Which is very helpful when it comes to being aggressive and timely on certain things that need to get done. So thank you.
Okay. Okay, number ten is announcements. Any other announcements? I believe Pete LaRue is out there in public and it looks like he's still out there. I don't know if Pete or Mark A or anyone else has any. Charts, yeah, announcements. Okay, let's move on to public comment, actually.
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay.
Beat LaRue twenty eighty-two here on street. A question for Jason, is there any plans to put a roundabout at Commerce? Then you want, a lot of people.
No, not at this time. However. There is a a certain type of intersection that I read about over the weekend. That I'm going to ask M dot to put as a bookmark. In our community and it's something that. Our previous staff planner, Isaac Peterson, learned in Minnesota, and it's something that they're using there. And it's something newer. It's not, I mean, they they do have these types of intersections downstate, but I don't believe there's a one. In the UP. I'll get my head wrapped around that and once I recommend it to M dot. I will I'll forward you along a video that shows how that intersection works. And it's and it's used in areas where you're trying to avoid. You know, two lanes of traffic and broadside collisions, but it's, you know, it's almost a replacement for a roundabout too, but it's a little bit different. And it's safer than the Michigan laps that we currently utilize through study. So I appreciate that comment, Pete. I know that that's something that is a big concern and question to residents. Being able to make left hand turns onto the highway or right hand turns onto the highway. Nothing in the plans right now, but certainly something we can look at in the future.
The problem is a lot of people are complaining about that lot. I mean. They brought it up to me and to others that I understand that the people coming from Commerce, they from the Martran or the offices. Nowhere as we go the other and they got them live in Marquette. And they come to the intersection and have to go all the way up or they go down Brookton, you know, either that or fix up Brookton Road. That's an awful narrow road with trees coming across the road and, you know, that's not supposed to been meant for a freeway, but you know. If I'm going down there, that really could just turn at the intersection and go down into Marquette. So that's, I told him I'd bring it up, so.
Yeah, the problem there has always been the amount of geometry essentially that's there. There's not as much M dot right away ownership in that area, either fee simple or by easement. And so. You know, I think there's areas that we could acquire that might make that other type of intersection viable, but we'll work on that, Pete. I'll work on that for you.
Well, to get any more traffic down Brookton, Wigan's there, going to put a toll bridge there. Well, to get any more traffic down Brookton, you know, uh, Wigan's there, gonna put a toll bridge there. Thank you. Good, nice meeting.
Along that same line, Jason, isn't there some kind of a, uh. By which M dot would allow left turns off of Commerce onto US 41 and not allow turns on US 41?
Not sure if I follow that one.
Well, you could make a left turn off of Commerce onto US 41, but restrict, uh, left. Uh, from US 41 traffic onto Commerce.
Okay, um.
That would eliminate the, uh, the road, the. That's, uh, the problem there.
Great.
Okay.
Maybe a good suggestion, because that's what.
Well, we'll, uh, we'll pick their brain and see if. Um, either they're agreeable to either one of those scenarios, but yeah, I mean, they're, they're certainly aware.
They could do left turns off of Commerce onto US 41. That would eliminate all that traffic. Especially the Mark Tran traffic that's coming down Brookton Road and beating it up.
Okay, is there any other public out there that would like to comment? Okay, hearing none, we move on to additional comments by planning commissioners. Uh, who would like?
I'll go first.
Alright.
There was the, um, preliminary of the site plan we looked at for the new. Uh, building that's going across from the Discount Tire Northeast Quad of. Uh, anyway, you know what I'm talking about there? That we're gonna put in the underground drainage facility and then tie into M dot's drainage. Permit been approved? I mean, is that, is that all taken care of, all that underground, um, stormwater collection that they had planned on putting in there? That's, that's been approved?
Yeah, the planning commission required that that be approved prior to any, uh, improvements to the site other than. Uh, grading and stormwater. So Ryan, if you wanna follow up with that, but I know that it's been approved.
I could try to find a date, bring it to you guys, but.
But yeah, we essentially, uh, once that was received. And then we received their financial guarantee, uh, we sent them on their way.
Okay, alright, so that's all, I mean, that, because I noticed they were putting a lot of infrastructure in there, bearing it. So I had it was taken care of. Did they get permission to put it into the M dot right away? I think that was approved June 12th. Okay, and then M dot was willing to accept their.
It's metered though. It's pretty highly metered.
It is. Okay. Well, i- is there an overflow provision in there?
Uh, I'm not sure on the specifics of that, that particular question, but I can get back to you with the answer if that's something.
I guess it's not critical, but it's, it's been approved though.
It's, it's a technical issue and, um, you know, we ran into this, uh, we serve on the Highway Corridor Committee, right? And so. Uh, we haven't met in a couple of months, but previous, uh, any. Any development that happens along the corridor through, uh, Marquette County effectively has a representative at that meeting and that's a once a month meeting and. We meet, uh, and review site plans. Uh, we talk about access management and how it's working for our respective communities. And M dot's been very leery of allowing stormwater because they're worried about capacity. Uh, and, and things that you just mentioned. I will say that, um, the swales that were installed between the roundabouts and that kinda new mentality, I know the city's been doing it and I really like what they do. With those, uh, that's more of a sustainable practice to have an actual swell. So not only is it a green space, but it's also a mini detention area. And the city's been doing a good job of that downtown and increasing their stormwater capacity. So, uh, we're trying to push that type of design throughout the corridor, including the 2021 project, wherein one feasible.
So that's actually a non-point source then. I mean, they're, they're, uh, so there must be. A sewer that goes down the middle of US 41 and goes to Market City in a pipe, big pipe. And that's just eject, it's superior?
Well, it's, uh, it's a point of discussion for sure. So when we were in Ashland. Or when I was in Ashland, um, the same scenario, you had, uh, blocks and blocks of stormwater that was going. And in some cases, unfortunately, given the age of that community, there was some mixing of stormwater and some old, um, sanitary lines.
Oh.
Now, what was done along the lakeshore and what you're seeing Marquette starting to do is to create those bio swales. And that is information that I actually provided to. Um, Dennis Stackowitz, um, in one of my first two years here, I sent him, because I had made kiosks that were informational. Designed them and we put them down there, um, to demonstrate, okay, this is why this area is here. So what it does basically is it holds a bunch of stormwater and it perks out and then it regulates it. Um, and the, and the plant types that you install in there help to treat that. So the store, you know, if you look at the, um, what used to be Bob's Jungle. Down where the beautiful waterfront is now along Founder's Landing, um, they've really done a good job with that stream that comes through there, which is. You know, sometimes intermittent, and I'm sure during a major rainstorm like we've had in the last couple of weeks, that's, it comes flowing pretty quick through there. So sometimes if you remember, you go through Ashland, you see all that brown brackish water out in the bay. That's from. The clay soil types one, but it was also a mix of, um, stormwater and other things. But now it's cleaner, uh, except for the. The clay that comes through, uh, the soils and gets into the, the Shawmigan Bay there. But. But effectively, what we're trying to do, and I think, you know, the, the point that Mike brought up about is that a non-point so, source. Could that be utilized in one of these planning grants that, uh, we're looking at? The, the answer is yes. And it ties very well into with what we worked on with the MOP 2. And would check a number of boxes. So it's good to put those little three, four, five, $10,000 projects together because. Sooner or later, all of a sudden, you got enough money to go after, at least from a matching standpoint, you got some money to go after a larger brand. Um, I hope that answers your question, but yeah.
It does.
All that water goes out to the lake and it's very important that we be as clean with it as we can.
Thank you, Jason. Um, Mr. Wigan, did you get a chance to make a comment?
Didn't, and I have a couple to make, uh.
Okay.
The, um. Jason and I have been somehow, and I don't know how I got involved in it, but. We've been involved in some lighting that's going on over at, uh, Fox Chevrolet. And I wonder first if Jason could update the whole commission's rumors about something going on. And another one I just wanted to pass on to you that Pat Meyer has also called me and I referred her to you to complain about, uh. The household lighting and, uh, Autozone. That they were some shields on there to keep the light from coming over into their yard. She, and I don't know where that's at. I told her I referred that to you and you could get. But other than that, if you just wanna bring the commission up to date on what's going on at Fox Chevy.
Sure. So, uh, back in January, uh, we approved zoning compliance for. Effectively Fox to move into Fry's former site. There were some conditions to that. One was the removal of the Conex boxes or the shipping containers. That was accomplished. Um. One of their requests was to replace some light poles along the front edge of the highway because those poles were actually tied to. Um, uh, the Board of Light and Power and not to the business. So they did that except for, um, what they're doing now, which I have counted, I drove through there this morning. And there must be 10 to 12 concrete bases poured around the perimeter of the site. Um, I indicated to Fox DP that that was way outside of the scope of replacing a couple of light fixtures. Along the corridor. And that a full-blown photometric plan would need to be submitted to Marquette Township, um, showing zero. Uh, lumens at the property line. So no light pollution. The plan I received from them had upwards of 13, 12, 7, 8, 9 around the residential areas and around the boundary, and I simply said that that will not work. And that needs to be revised. I said you could probably get away by changing the light fixtures to be more directional. But I said, and, and a great example of that was, was the photometric that we received from Fish and Wildlife. That demonstrated zero, uh, regardless of whether there was residential or not, uh, at the property lines. And, uh, they just didn't get the approval. They just didn't move forward. And I'll give them that, uh, not everybody has a dark sky lighting ordinance in their community. And not everybody's gonna know that they, um, you know, were. They're required to meet certain requirements, uh, especially when you have residential land use of budding that business. So. They're gonna have to dig their heels in and get some work done. Um, I will say that I went to the top of Fox and then instead of working at the local level. And then that's gonna filter down to their lighting contractor. Um, we did receive another complaint about Fox's Subaru site. And that had to do simply with the timing of their lights. Believe it or not, a lot of times these lighting mechanisms and schemes are controlled off-site. Um, so like Fox Subaru, I believe is, you know, programmed and maintained, uh, in Grand Rapids. Basically, that's gonna be reprogrammed. In fact, the lighting contractor was out there this morning, uh, on Fox Subaru. And he indicated that, um, somehow something got switched and lights were just, you know, that, I don't know if it's daylight savings or what. But they got it sorted out. So. It's very important, um, from the neighbors, especially in our community where we have residential land use. Within close proximity to commercial development. That, uh, the lighting be controlled and we've done a great job, uh, in our zoning ordinance of accomplishing that. So next steps for Fox obviously is to put together a photometric that can be approved. I sent them a zoning compliance application. Uh, I've seen Ryan on, on those things and so he's aware too whenever we get it. Um, but they, they've got some work to do. Thankfully, we had a, a pretty astute, uh, not astute, but a pretty observant resident. She's astute too, I would say. And she, um, uh, called the Township Hall and had some concerns about the light poles that were going up. And rightfully so. I just promised her that those light fixtures will meet our ordinance and if not, they'll be deemed a nuisance and will be corrected immediately. With regard to Autozone and/or Art Van's lighting. I mean, Art Van, that building's been there for a long time. Um, we can make suggestions or, or, or explain to Steve Anderson, uh, at Art Van or, um, Household Appliance, excuse me. Uh, or the manager, uh, local manager at Autozone that we would like some shielding put on. But they're by no means obligated to do so unless it's deemed to be a nuisance, which. I guess if you get enough complaints, you can say that that's a nuisance. It's probably not a major deal for them to put up some shielding and, and I will work on talking to Steve and the manager of Autozone to, to, uh, accompany that.
It, she suggested on that, uh, the complaint. Was that there was some kind of an agreement reached for shielding and I don't know if that was. Through zoning or if that was with the business owners themselves, but. Point was is that we agreed to shielding was not put in place. So I pass that on to you for whatever you.
I will, uh, dissect that and drill into that further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jim Johnson. Do you have any, uh, comment? Or questions?
Uh, yeah, just a comment. I, I was going to ask about the Fox Subaru lighting as well. Um, but. Yeah, I, I guess when I look at those lights, uh, I know they're supposed to be like a downcast lighting. And as, it seems to me like there's a lot of light bleeding out from the sides. Should I go by there and on Northwood Road back there? Um, so I just wondered, Jason, if those were the lights that they had in the plans?
Yeah, everybody's using the same kinda lights now and, and they're all, thankfully, they're all. Downcast, uh, really fairly low emitting LEDs. If you do drive through the Subaru dealership and thank goodness Riverside did kinda the same thing. Riverside's are even shorter. Um, I know one thing we did in Ashland that, uh, we didn't wanna do, we brought it up at the planning commission level was to put a, a pole height. Um, limitation on commercial lighting, which, uh, the planning commission backed out of. And that's fine. So. But yes, their plan, you know, as long as they turn them off when the business is closed or when it's not occupied. They should be good to go. There shouldn't be any, um, uh, light pollution. I mean, obviously. Giving, you know, the site where it is and then the residences being up at a higher level. There's gonna be some interplay in what you see and what you don't see. Um, but that site, I will say, um. They've done a lot of work over there, the landscaping, the earthwork, and they still have 172 bare root plants that need to go in next spring because they weren't able to accom. Um. I guess accommodate the schedule during the, it was, you know, normally you pull those plants out in May. And then within a certain timeframe, you gotta get them back in the ground, right? That's what bear plants are all about. Um, they weren't able to accomplish that. So. I think it looks fantastic already as it is, but there's still 172 trees and bushes that will be planted in the spring of next year. Um, to fill that out. So. That, you know, they wanna work. They don't want any bad, uh, beef with the neighbors. Um, they've been pretty forthright. Even I have a great working relationship, I would think with, uh. Um, you know, their, their overall Michigan site developer, uh, Colin. He and I, uh, have a, a good relationship. So. I just call him. If I see a problem, I call him and he, he fixes it. So that's, that's what we're working on right now.
Regarding that, have you heard any? Reads, elaborate across the street? Have they said anything to you lately about how they interpret it or how they feel about it?
Um, initially, when they started going and, and actually finishing off the driveway and doing the earthwork, he had contacted me. Questioning me why there was heavy trucks on that segment of the road and I just explained to him that they have to build it. They have to be able to build it and get in there and work on it. Uh, since everything's been done, I have not heard, I don't know if that's good or bad, cuz. Uh, you know, we talked about maybe having a beer together at some point, but I don't know if it's good or bad that, uh. That he hasn't contacted me, but I haven't heard anything from him since that time.
Okay, any more comments from commissioners? I just have one, Roger Zappa. I actually, this is a very interesting meeting. I learned a lot. Uh, Roger Zappa, for all your work that you've done on bylaws and ordinances and. Everything else, uh. And also I always appreciate the fact that you're here cuz I always learn something from you. Other than that. I think it's about time. What do you guys think? Anybody wanna stay with us any longer?
I'm done.
All right, it's 8:47 and with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Thank you.